Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting on March 4th. I am going to ask Deborah from the Women's Advisory Board to come on up and read the land acknowledgement, please.
The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather and that is currently known as the City of West Hollywood is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabrioleño Tonga and Gabrioleño Quiche peoples.
Thank you so much, Deborah. All right, I will now call this meeting to order. It is 6:01 PM tonight. Continuing in our tradition, we have fourth grader from West Hollywood Elementary Mason Susskind to lead us with the pledge. Come on up, Mason.
Ready to go? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, Mason. Mason, you're gonna have to get used to all that paparazzi, I feel. I mean, you did a great job. Don't go too far. All right, City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Heilman.
Here.
Councilmember Meister.
Here.
Councilmember Shine.
Present.
Vice Mayor Byers.
Present.
Mayor Erickson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We will now move to the approval of the agenda. Madam City Clerk, are there any changes from staff?
No, Mayor, there are no changes from staff this evening.
Wonderful. Do my colleagues have any changes?
Yes, I would like to request and see if we can move 5A to consent.
I have questions and comments.
Sounds good.
Okay, I would like to, let's keep going. How about 5B?
I have comments.
Comments, okay. Then 5C?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and also 5D.
Yes.
Great.
All right. See, we found a way to get consensus. I see that, I think that is everything else that we, Councilmember Heilman.
Mayor, I'd like to note my no vote on item 2J.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Heilman. Seeing in no other changes from my colleagues, we will go forth and get a motion in a second. All right, that passes five to zero. We will now move to adjournment motions. Do any of my colleagues have any adjournment motions? Councilmember Meister? Councilmember Shine?
No.
Councilmember Heilman? Vice Mayor Byers? Great, I don't either as well. All right, presentations. Mason, come back on up, we're gonna take a photo with you, we have a certificate for you. Thank you so much for coming and joining us tonight. We then have two presentations tonight. I'm going to start with a proclamation and recognition of the 100th anniversary of the Historic English Village. Whereas the Historic English Village was built in 1924 by local developer Elmer Maussi at 1,000 to 1,012 Half Larrabee Street in West Hollywood and was designed by renowned architects in the Tudor Revival style, originally as part of a complex of shops, restaurants, and residence that were part of the first major commercial development along the Sunset Strip that utilized the scenic vista of the Los Angeles Basin and its design, recognizing the implicit value of the view as an amenity that added to the commercial appeal of the English Village. And whereas the Historic English Village was one of the first residential complexes in West Hollywood designed by a female architect, which today includes eight residential units on one half of the property located from 1,000 to 1,006 Larrabee Street that feature four English cottages and four one-bedroom apartments, all of which share an expansive garden and patio, including the first three cottages that were made available to rent on March 1st, 1924. And whereas in 1924, the English Village sparked a trend on Sunset Boulevard of the lively use of period revival stylings and embodies character-defining features of the Tudor Revival style, including stucco walls with exposed half-timbers, steeply pitched gable roofs projecting bay windows, multi-pan diamond-shaped leaded glass windows, upper stories that overhang the lower stories supported on a projecting timbers, entrances with peaked Tudor point arches, brick arc accents around perimeter door openings, and lush landscaping and mature trees that reflect the theme of the English countryside. That was a mouthful, by the way. And whereas over the past century, countless creative and entertainment industrial professionals, industry professionals have called the Historic English Village home, including Hollywood stars Joan Blondell and Tom Sizemore, Oscar-winning cinematographer George S. Barnes who filmed Alfred Hitchcock's Rebecca in 1940, as well as acclaimed novelists, literary figures, production designers, musicians, songwriters, and artists, and much more. And whereas renowned architects, indigenous layouts which maximize both comfort and space have inspired devotion from Historic English Village's current residents, as reflected by the fact that of the eight residential units, four have been occupied by the same tenants for over 25 years and one for over 50. Whereas the Historic English Village was designated a cultural landmark by the City of West Hollywood on December 6, 1993, and it's further protected as a historic resource under the contract between the city and the property owner pursuant to the California Mills Act. And whereas longtime property owners, the West family and Solana Industries LLC have faithfully and lovingly restored Historic English Village with a significant investment of more than $1 million since 2010 to preserve, protect, and maintain its many exceptional character-defining features for current residents and future generations to enjoy. Thus in reassuring that an ever-evolving city, Historic English Village remains both a whimsical legacy, I don't get to say whimsical up here very often, of West Hollywood's early days and enduring tribute to a progressive-minded developer and talented architect. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of West Hollywood hereby congratulates and commends the owner and residents of the Historic English Village at 1,000 to 1,006 Larrabee Street on the occasion of its 100th anniversary as a cherished and well-preserved historic landmark to the city. And at this time, I would like to invite up those in attendance, the West family, Marlene, Todd, Dana, and several longstanding tenants of the Historic English Village to come on up to the dais and accept a proclamation with myself and my colleagues.
Mayor Erickson, honorable members of the West Hollywood City Council, city staff, and members of the public. My name's Dana West. It's an honor to speak this evening on behalf of the entire West family, proud owners of the Historic English Village in the City of West Hollywood. We're deeply grateful to you, Mayor Erickson, and to all the members of the City Council for this wonderful proclamation honoring this milestone. Owning a building that is landmarked by the city as a historic property and further protected by the California Mills Act is a privilege, a challenge, and a great responsibility. I wanted to acknowledge my brother Todd West, who has made a passionate commitment to restoring, preserving, and protecting this treasured building, ensuring that original character-defining features are preserved. Yesterday, our family was proud to host a gathering for all of our wonderful tenants to kick off this 100th anniversary celebration. As you mentioned, there's been tenants who have been there one more than half a century, and I myself have been on the waitlist for quite some time. I want to express special thanks to our tenant, Mark Tapio Kynes, of the LA Street Names website for undertaking extraordinary research into the history and origin of this landmark and for creating three beautiful photo boards that tell the compelling story of how the village came to be. These three boards are on display in the lobby of the council chambers, and I hope all of you will have the opportunity to view them to learn more about history. It's been an exciting privilege and honor to care for the Historic English Village, and I say here's to the next 100 years.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, that was so lovely. All right, next up, we have our amazing Women's Advisory Board here because it's Women's History Month. Yeah, you should cheer for that. This is one of my favorite things that we do, and so I know that we're gonna be having the banner reveals at a later date, so you have us all in suspense. But whereas the month of March is a nationally recognized as National Women's History Month, a time to commemorate and reflect upon the many accomplishments of women and the ongoing efforts to achieve equal rights. And whereas National Women's History Month provides the opportunity to recognize and celebrate women's historic achievements, as well as an opportunity to honor women within our communities. And whereas the city has celebrated National Women's History Month for 38 years, and together with its WAB, our Women's Advisory Board, we work together to ensure that programming reflecting women's diverse achievements is offered through the month, and this year, the board is also celebrating its 30th anniversary. And whereas the activities for National Women's History Month are long and exclusively freaking amazing this year, if I do gotta say so, but collaborations include the city's Russian-speaking advisory board, the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission, along with the city arts divisions. Highlights includes the Women's History Month street poll banners displayed all along Santa Monica Boulevard, unveiling two new banners soon. The globes on Santa Monica Boulevard will be lit purple and gold. This month kicked off, this past weekend, with the city's International Women's Day Celebration, the Sexual Healing and Sexual Health Ladies Brunch, the Guaranteed Income Advocacy Training and Viewing Parties for coming up for movies. Festivities will continue with a mashup contemporary dance company's 8th Annual International Women's Dance Festival, the 8th Annual Hollywood Now Herstory Awards honoring the one and only former council member Abby Land, the Women's History Month Party, and Ruth Bader Ginsburg Day commemoration hosted by the WAB, and the 27th Annual West Hollywood Women Leadership Awards and Reception co-sponsored by the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of West Hollywood hereby proclaims the month of March as, March 2024, as National Women's History Month in the City of West Hollywood, and urges our community members to participate in the celebration activities. And now I'd love to invite our WAB to come on up and accept this proclamation.
Hello, our gorgeous City Council, and our staff, and our audience, and everyone at home. Thank you so much for having us today. We just want to repeat what our lovely mayor said, and our party on this 15th Friday, 6:30 right here, and it's gonna be gorgeous. And then on the 13th, we have our Hollywood Herstory Awards from Hollywood Now. As you said, a fan favorite Abby Land is being honored. And then the Commerce on the 27th, our Women in Leadership Awards. We hope we can see you all there, it's gonna be so fun. The full calendar is at weho.org/whm. Standing for Women's History Month. Again, that's weho.org/whm, and we'll see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Angela. All right, we're gonna move on to public comment. The City Council values your comments. Where pursuant to the Brown Act, council cannot take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. The public comment period is limited to 20 minutes with two minutes allotted for each speaker. This comment period is to address the City Council on consent calendar items or items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Another period is also reserved for the general comment later in the meeting. For those who could not be heard at this time, public hearing testimony will only be taken at the time of the public hearing. If you go over your two minutes and do not respond to the city clerk's notification that your time has expired, your microphone will be muted. If you signed up to speak on both consent calendar items and general public comment, as well as an item that was moved to the consent calendar, you may take this public comment period to speak on the consent calendar items. You may also sign up to speak during the second public comment period for your general public comment. Lastly, speakers should not bring any items to the podium other than a prepared written statement and/or writing materials. And speaking of writing materials, I can't find my pen, Melissa, so if anyone has a pen, could you bring me another one, because now it's gone missing. It's a mystery up here. Madam City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
I have mine.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shine.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one individual in Zoom, and we have five individuals in chambers.
Great, let's do the one in Zoom first.
Okay.
Our first speaker on Zoom this evening is Jamie Francis. Jamie, please press star 6 to unmute.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Erickson and council members. I just wanted to emphasize, because I'll be speaking about 5A, which I hope is still on the agenda, but I just wanted to say that this is becoming a really serious crisis here in California, especially in the Southern California region. CNN Business just reported that people are paying 70% of their income, two-thirds of their income or more, on rents in Los Angeles, which has become the most expensive market. Mauricio Yumenski, who is the realtor in this area, says that we're in an affordability housing crisis, and that he sees no way that it's going to lessen the blow of people who have money, who are basically embedding themselves here in the city and displacing people who are fixed income, including myself, who's been here for 13 years. So I live in a city for 13 and have to move out 15, or have to stay in the same unit in perpetuity for 20 years? I don't see that as ideal. And the City Council has had to take steps in the past, and currently, and concurrently, to make sure this does not happen. Steamboat Springs, Colorado, says that the workers are now the ones living in workers' motels or worker housing, and that Airbnbs have become dominated for a resort town. West Hollywood, Beverly Hills, Santa Monica, we are the urbanized resort cities. You get a lot with TOT tax at the hotels, but Airbnb decimated this city. Airbnbs and short-term rentals were not enforced, there was no code enforcement or lax, and it decimated. And I'm very disappointed, because your staff failed in that regard. So, like I mentioned with Mayor Erickson, a couple of years ago, you said blame cost of Hawkins. No, this is beyond cost of Hawkins. Now that they have mandated, because now you have to build 3,000 units. You, the city has failed with implementing a comprehensive housing element.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Jamie, your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Jamie. We'll now move into in-person public comments. Our first one is Nick Roybal, to be followed by Alan Strasberg.
I'm just gonna go quickly. 2E, I want to remind everyone, and I was reminded at the Human Services Commission, that West Hollywood, the city subsidizes 20 rides for those who are 62 years and older, and those with claimed disabilities, 20 free rides with Metro LA. So that's incredible. So we should all take advantage of that if you're a resident 62 and older and/or have a claimed disability. Get your Metro card, go to City Hall, get those 20 rides to ride Metro. 2G, WeHo Target Vision, the action plan, we really need to make sure that we are enforcing all of our laws. There is no one law that is greater than another. 2H, I applaud our transparency in our council-initiated events. It did occur to me when I read the staff report and the spreadsheet that certain council members have much more events than others, and I'm wondering what mechanism we can create to equally distribute events between each council member. 2M, it is critical, and I applaud our staff, Nick Marisich, that we get these PIP funds for the Holloway Motel. 5C, that was moved, you know, I would like to remind every commissioner that they took an oath. Part of that oath is that you show up. I'm gonna repeat that again. Part of the oath as a commissioner is that you show up and do your service and your duty. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nick. Alan Strasberg, to be followed by Sam Borelli.
Alan Strasberg, longtime resident of West Hollywood. I do want to echo what Nick said about 2H. 2H is really a council slush fund to buy votes, we all know that. Regarding 2G, I want to begin by indulging in that time-honored tradition. In these chambers, I've engaged in a bit of virtue signaling by saying that I walked here tonight, and I will walk home. The staff memo for 2G references two components of the West Hollywood general plan. Component M3 reads, "Maintain and enhance a pedestrian-oriented city." Component M9 reads, "Facilitate sustainable, effective, and safe movement of goods and commercial vehicles." We are talking about what appears to be a holistic approach to public safety in our movements. How on earth do we discuss this topic without any mention of scooters and robo-deliveries that every day impede the movement and safety of pedestrians? Scooters are corporate pollution and hazard to all pedestrians, particularly older adults and disabled friends and neighbors. Robo-deliveries cost jobs, and to this luddite, jobs are more important than gizmos and gadgets. They have become far more aggressive and dangerous to pedestrians as their numbers have multiplied. Do better. Part of the oath as a commissioner is that you show up and do your service and your duty. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nick. Alan Strasberg, to be followed by Sam Borelli.
Alan Strasberg, longtime resident of West Hollywood. I do want to echo what Nick said about 2H. 2H is really a council slush fund to buy votes. We all know that. Regarding 2G, I want to begin by indulging in that time-honored tradition in these chambers of engaging in a bit of virtue signaling by saying that I walked here tonight, and I will walk home. The staff memo for 2G references two components of the West Hollywood general plan. Component M3 reads, "Maintain and enhance a pedestrian-oriented city." Component M9 reads, "Facilitate sustainable, effective, and safe movement of goods and commercial vehicles." We are talking about what appears to be a holistic approach to public safety in our movements. How on earth do we discuss this topic without any mention of scooters and robo-deliveries that every day impede the movement and safety of pedestrians? Scooters are corporate pollution and a hazard to all pedestrians, particularly older adults and disabled friends and neighbors. Robo-deliveries cost jobs, and to this luddite, jobs are more important than gizmos and gadgets. They have become far more aggressive and dangerous to pedestrians as their numbers have multiplied. Do better.
Thank you so much, Alan. Sam Borelli, to be followed by Michael Pitkin.
Good evening. My name is Sam Borelli, and I am here on behalf of the Human Services Commission to share vital information about the myriad social service programs available to community members at no cost. March is National Nutrition Month. According to our most recent community study, 19% of residents experience food insecurity. For perspective, that's nearly 7,000 people that we know of. Food insecurity meaning someone might only eat one meal per day, and the lack of access to affordable nutritious food are associated with increased risk for multiple chronic health conditions such as diabetes and heart disease. The city partners with the following nonprofit agency to provide free food resources to community members, and we urge people to take advantage of them. Jewish Family Services SOVA program provides groceries, home-delivered meals, and food education. Project Angel Food provides home-delivered medically tailored meals to individuals with a debilitating chronic illness. The LA LGBT Center Senior Services offers meals or hot grab-and-go meals, weekly groceries, and a monthly farmer's market of fresh produce. Seeds of Hope offers fresh produce, nutrition education, and healthy cooking classes. And APLA's Necessities of Life program serves people living with HIV/AIDS and provides pre-bag groceries, including fresh produce and nutrition counseling. See, we've got you covered. If you or someone you know is experiencing food insecurity, we can connect you to these life-enhancing services by visiting weho.org/humanservices, or by calling the amazing city staff at 323-848-6510. I'm gonna say this, don't be afraid. Don't be ashamed. These are here for you. Let us help. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sam. Next up is Michael Pitkin, to be followed by Katie Crespo.
Michael Pitkin, general public comment. I am First Nations 3E people of this earth, European, Eastern European. I do have a right to be critical of other sovereign and First Nations peoples in discussions of war, peace, and civil rights harms and abuse. Rumor is, my grandfather on my mother's side either killed the Russian royal family as an operative, or I am the real Russian royal family, as my aunts Anna and Mary did not survive the Russian Revolution. Communists and President Vladimir Putin do not like my speech. Then again, he is grandson of Vladimir Lenin. I, however, believe in freedom of the religion, freedom of speech, and the press, and the right to protest my own government. My grandfather was trained as a tailor in St. Petersburg. He was part of a team of tradesmen sent to establish lumber towns of Burns, Hines, Oregon. I guess he and all my family have dual identities, similar to the movie Greenland, which now, daily, I am being gang stalked, harassed, hacked, abused, violated for being white privileged. On my father's side, I can trace my family tree 1,500 years, all through Europe's and America's histories. There was a Pitkin in George Washington's cabinet. There is Pitkin, Mississippi, Pitkin County, Colorado, including Vail and Aspen, Pitkin Avenue in New York. My brother kept Long Beach from sinkholes at Thoms, a conglomerate of Texaco, Humble, Union, Mobile, and Shell. I am a descendant of Marie Antoinette. Is this a tale of two cities? My grandmother is a Kaiser. Again, BIPOC community gossip is, I am a paperclip Nazi. Fruit of the poisonous tree.
Thank you, Michael. Katie Crespo, to be followed by Richard Eastman.
Buenas tardes, mi gente. My name is Katie Arabella Crespo. I wanted to thank y'all for allowing me to be here. I was here a couple of months ago to invite y'all to our sober New Year's Eve party, and now I'm here to be like, thank you for the sober New Year's Eve party. We had a total of 645 people show up. That's 600. I want you guys to mellow that in for a moment, and that's 645 people that chose not to drink or participate in a substance on New Year's Eve. So that, like, we just saved 645 people's lives, so just a round of applause, because that was insanely incredible. So thank you guys so much. I can go on and on about how great it was, but I just wanted to read really quickly what some of the comments was. Someone wrote, "It was one of the best parties I've ever attended, drunk sober ever. And I may have cried at midnight being surrounded by sober queer people living a truly beautiful life beyond my wildest dreams." Another person wrote, "I just want to share with you that I'm just overwhelmed with gratitude. I cried last night several times, and I'm teary this morning. If little closeted queens knew they could experience the connection and joy and fun we had last night, it would be a whole different world." So I just want to thank you guys so much for this opportunity. I hope that we can revisit and do this opportunity again for 2024, going into 2025. I watched a couple of Judge Judy episodes. I know I'm not supposed to go up to y'all, so I don't know if your bait lifts want to give you guys these, but we got these cute little annual reports, and they're so that you guys can read them. They're super cute. It's Beyonce themed, so I really stuck with it. I don't know who to give this to, but yeah, thanks, guys.
Katie, why don't you give it to our city clerk right there? Although I'm sure you would not rush us with a report with such data, but thank you so much for coming out. That's great. Richard Eastman, to be followed by our last speaker, Nick Schaefer.
Born on the streets of San Francisco, West Hollywood, and Washington DC, congratulations, City Council of West Hollywood, for allowing me to speak before you were a city on the streets that I changed America, because I'm wearing a burlo tie made of gold and silver that says United States Senate. I have three choices, and today, they answered in Washington DC, the smoking at the White House. Four months from this day, on the Fourth of July, an event that started 54 years ago, before Dennis Peron and I and Harvey Milk and George Moscone and everyone that died to fight for medicine. And West Hollywood and San Francisco allowed me to change 24 states for legalization, more than 40 for medicalization. And on the eve of my 71st birthday, on the eve of the riots, Rodney King, April 29th, Richard Eastman's still alive. And John, look at me, and John Heilman, and Seppi, good luck on whatever you're gonna do for this city. And I've never asked you to honor me, and I never asked the government to honor me for what I do in our nation's capital, whether I go or I don't go, because the permits have been granted to John Pilka, who had a heart attack, who answered the phone today and said, "Richard, whether you come or you're not, will you help me?" And on May 3rd and 4th, I'll be at the Emerald Cup in Oakland. And my Vice President Kamala Harris is from Oakland. And when I beat Cooley, because I had a marijuana magazine, and your Emerald City should be free on gay pride, and it should be free because I freed America from the tyranny of putting black and brown kids in jail for marijuana. And will you free me when I'm dead, whoever is the mayor? Or maybe someday, I'll be the real governor. My name is Richard Eastman. Thank you, West Hollywood.
Thank you so much, Richard. Nick Schaefer is our last speaker.
Hello, Nick Schaefer, City of West Hollywood. So English Village, I've been there now 51 years. Moved in 1973, two-bedroom cottage, I paid $185. The one-bedrooms were $100. I just want to say how grateful I am to live in West Hollywood these 50 years. Want to acknowledge Jason Turner, the owners from the Turner Liquor Stores, who owned it at the beginning, since the 1950s, then to Todd West, who's just been incredible, hasn't raised my rent other than the rent controls, put in a million dollars. So grateful to him. It's so wonderful. So grateful, just want to say thank you, West Hollywood, and thank you to the English Village. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nick. That concludes public comment. All right, we are now going to move on to the city manager's part. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. I just have a couple of comments. The city's public safety, happy National Women's History Month, first of all. The Public Safety Appreciation Event will be held this Wednesday, March 6, here at the City Council Chambers, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. All community members are welcome to join us, recognizing our public safety partners. For more information, please contact the Public Safety Division at safety@weho.org. And the March 5 primary election ends tomorrow. The city's 3 vote-by-mail drop boxes are open behind City Hall on Sweetsor Avenue, at Plummer Park Community Center, and in front of the City Council Chambers on San Vicente Boulevard. We also have two open vote centers in the city, one in Fiesta Hall at Plummer Park, and the other at the Aquatics and Recreation Center in West Hollywood Park. For more information, please see the city's website at weho.org/elections. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you so much. Mr. Wilson, city clerk, what's the fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar with the addition of items 5C and 5D is $2,662,156 in expenditures, $750,000 in revenue, and $0 in waived fees. There is a motion on the floor to adopt tonight's consent calendar, and we have a second. And the consent calendar is approved.
Wonderful. Moving right along. We are going to go right to 5A. Councilmember Meister, did you need a full staff report on this?
No.
So we'll go right to, do any of my colleagues wish to have a staff report?
Nope.
Great. We'll go to questions, is that thing? And please introduce yourselves.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Allison Bardell, the Project Development Administrator for Property Development. I'm joined by my manager, Brian Leeg. We do have a short presentation, but we're happy to take questions, whatever the council prefers.
Yeah, questions, please.
Great.
But thank you for making a presentation.
Okay.
So do I start?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, in this staff report, are we proposing to expand the program, or you're just still talking about the original pilot?
Correct. We wanted to provide some background, some context, and update. And so, again, we'll come back to you. I think one thing to highlight is that the three-year loans are repayable to the city, and so it will be up to the city to decide at that point in time when the pilot of two units is complete, if we want to move forward, or if it's just a pilot.
Okay. And then, and I realize that these are affordable units, affordable ADUs.
Right. Section 8, yep.
But I was just wondering, are we monitoring ADUs that are not in the program? In other words, can we get a report back to find out how many have been permitted so far? How many have been built, and are they being rented?
Sure. I can, just offhand, that's not completely our division, but I know that the annual progress report that goes to HCD includes specifically the call-out for ADUs. And so I believe that that's going to be coming in April. I'd have to ask long-range planning, but I think it's on look ahead, and it's listed there. If you want to, specifically, we can pull it out and talk about it, but I know that I was working on some of the numbers earlier this week, and that's a big part of that report.
Yeah. And my question would be, when you do come back with it, I don't need to know today, is not only how many have been built, but are we checking to see that they've actually been rented, and if they have, what they've been rented for? How much money they're renting for? Because I would guess that some of them may be being built and then used as office, you know, home office or whatever. So it would be interesting to know that, especially if we want to figure out, do we want to continue this pilot program?
Yeah, we could talk to rent stabilization. I know with the mandatory, the registration that's been expanded, I know that we've got some new numbers there, so we'll see what we can get.
Okay. And then my last question would be for Brian. Brian, do you think this has been a successful program? And be honest.
The costs have been... I think it was more difficult to kick off than we expected. Just the costs associated with a government program versus a private individual, some of our requirements. But any attention we could bring to ADUs and their feasibility and ability to be built in the city, I think's been a positive.
Okay.
But I would like to report back...
A little wishy-washy, Brian.
You know, I'd like to report back once we get these permitted and occupied, and I think would be a better time to have a discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're gonna now move to public comment. We have one in Zoom, one in chambers. We're gonna take Zoom first, and then we'll go to Nick Roybal, who's in chambers.
Our next speaker is Jamie Francis. Jamie, please press star 6 to unmute.
Thank you so much. I wanted to emphasize, and I waited to talk about the ADUs. It is not feasible in this city to supplement that as an alternative to affordable housing, because just to make the point with Councilmember Meister, is that what happens is these people do it to enhance the property values of their properties, and then they use that as an excuse to, yes, I will be open to affordable housing or a unit, and it does not happen. They do it to basically supply or build and get around permits to do it for their families or certain people or relatives. It does not impact in a positive way this city, so much so that the county of LA Board of Supervisors is trying to address the Airbnb. These are interchangeable. These, unfortunately, these dwelling units, the ADUs, have been abused, where other cities don't have an alternative to affordable housing, and they're saying, well, let's use ADUs. But yet, nobody wants to address the issue that's become problematic for homeowners that just want to justify the properties and sell them off. And they're not providing housing for us individuals in this city. And I wish it was, but they're not advertising. You go to Zillow, you go to a lot of these websites, they're not showing options, and the, you know, the cheapness that you see in this city, along with Beverly Hills or Hollywood Hills, is $2,800 to $3,800. How is that affordable? How is that feasible? It's not. So the city has to basically put rent caps and allow people who need to stay in these units to qualify for Section 8, to qualify for in-city housing, but you don't have your own housing authority. So that's why it's a failure. So please address this issue. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, Jamie Francis. And next we'll call up Nick Roybal.
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So the word of the evening, word of the evening, liquefaction. Because in the staff report, one of the residents, or the clients, or the prospective applicants didn't realize, insert language, lawyerly language, they didn't realize that their property was in the liquefaction zone in West Hollywood. So I want every homeowner in this city, right now, if you're watching this, is your property in the liquefaction zone. Everybody needs to know this, because it really does matter. As we have more extreme weather events, as we have earthquakes, liquefaction, solid earth, water comes in, we have an earthquake, there's a shift in the tectonics, then your home property begins sinking. One of the applicants alleged that they didn't know their property was in the confection, so they pulled out. Additionally, and thank you, Councilmember Meister, for, again, your keen questions. Another applicant, after signing the contract, pulled out because they didn't want to rent to a Section 8 applicant for seven years. Insert one's belief about what that is about, but they were clear, you know, the rules were clear before they signed the contract, and then they pulled out. So to your point, Councilmember Meister, is this an effective, efficient program? If an applicant can pull out after they sign the contract because they don't want to rent to a Section 8 applicant? Well, then what are we doing, West Hollywood? Again, the word of the evening is liquefaction zone, and if you live in this city, you should know what that means. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick. I was trying to make a liquefaction joke, but it just didn't come up at the time. But it reminds me of Melrose Triangle Conversation. That concludes public comment. Councilmember Meister, do you want to begin comments, or do you...
Actually, I would ask that Councilmember Heilman start, because I know he had questions or comments about this also.
I just have concerns, and I think you were raising them, about the effectiveness of this particular program, but these haven't been built yet. I think we should wait and have our staff do an analysis, and then we can come back and look at whether it makes sense to continue this or invest our funds in other affordable housing initiatives.
What he said.
That's right. All right. Councilmember Shine, do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Byers. I concur. So I think, given that, if we could get a motion in a second, thank you. So I think, given that, if we could get a motion in a second, thank you. I see that. We'll vote. Five-zero. Thank you so much. We are now going to move on to item 5B, Halloween Carnival 2023 Post-Event Report. I would like a small staff report on this because I thought, since it's our first year back, and our amazing special event staff who's getting set up did such great work, it'd be good to have for the public's benefit all of what went into it. So please introduce yourselves, and we'll get to it.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Megan Reith, the Event Services Supervisor, and joined here with Cleo Smith, Event Services Manager, and Yvonne Corker, Community Services Director. We're here this evening with a post-event report for last year's Halloween event, which returned after a three-year hiatus following the pandemic. While the 2023 event maintained the same physical footprint as in years past, which is sort of the WeHo Pride footprint, La Cienega to Doheny, the event included reduced infrastructure from previous years. The shift to a single main stage with audio repeaters throughout the Boulevard and some food trucks and some photo stations reflected an effort to put the emphasis on creating a safe environment for city businesses to accommodate an increased number of patrons and activate their spaces. The event was successful and well-attended, with 20 city businesses pulling special event permits to activate their spaces. And we're here this evening because staff is prepared to release a request for proposal for event production services for future Halloween events. And ahead of that release, we wanted to confirm that the council is seeking a Halloween event of similar scale and scope of the 2023 event. So we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. I'll start with my left this time. Councilmember Heilman, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, but I want to thank you for all your work in putting together the event. I thought, given the fact that we didn't give you a full year for planning, you pulled it off really well. The music along the Boulevard, I think, could still be enhanced a little bit, but I think it really made it a lot easier for people to navigate on the street without the stages sort of in the middle of the street. So that aspect, I think, really was very much improved. I just want to throw out that next year, I believe Halloween is going to be on a Friday, so we might actually want to be thinking about an entire weekend of activities because we know how people like to celebrate Halloween in West Hollywood. So other than that, thank you and look forward to another great event this year.
Seeing there are no public comments for this item, we can move right into comments and questions, and I'll go right to Vice Mayor Byers. Do you have anything to add?
I'll just add, thank you. Yeah, the note on the amount of time given is significant, and it was just a beautiful event. I thought that the photo areas were really creative and awesome and was just curious if anything that those were, you know, opportunities for more sponsor engagement. That sort of opportunity came to mind. I was also curious, I saw that the pickup was very successful in commuting people. Was the City Line activated to the Hollywood Highland Red Line Station hub at all?
You know...
Here comes Laura.
I'm sorry. Thanks for us. Yes. I'm sorry to throw that out there like this.
Yes, it was.
It was. Okay. So, yes, we did utilize our City Line services to go out to Hollywood and Highland, and that went until 11 o'clock at night to be able to bring services back and forth. And then we had both City Line and the pickup running, so we did need to have seven vehicles that night to transport all of those people all along Santa Monica Boulevard.
And they were making direct stops at the Red Line back. That's all. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, and thank you for the report. I do think that since it is going to be a Friday, and I know this is not your area, but I think we do need to increase patrols in the neighborhoods themselves because last year there actually were problems. I know in, on the west side of West Hollywood West, there were actually like gang-like fights happening in the alley, and they called the police, and the sheriffs, they didn't, they couldn't come because it was just, they weren't there to do it. So I would really appreciate if we, you know, beef up our public safety crew in the actual neighborhoods, especially because it's a Friday. And also bins, you know, the garbage bins up and down Robertson and San Vicente because typically there's lots of garbage after.
It's Friday next year. It's Thursday this year.
Oh, it's Thursday this year?
Yeah. But your public safety comments, I think, are well-taken.
I thank you, and I stick by them.
Yeah. And people start on Thursdays this year because, well, that's all I'll say about that. Does that conclude your stuff, Councilmember Meister? Councilmember Shine?
I just want to say, I got such incredible feedback from the community, so thank you again. It was a wonderful event.
And I, too, wanted to pile on with a cacophony of thank yous. You all did such a great job, your entire team. I remember my Instagram was blown up with people saying, oh, my God, it's back. And people were like, next year, this year, I mean, it's going to be even bigger because it made such a splash. This last year, people were so happy. I made it into three different businesses, thankfully, and I thought they were actually very well-maintained, and I thought our sheriff's personnel did a really great job of ensuring streets and everything flowed. I always am reminded of what our fellow residents commissioners, so Teal and MJ, say about, don't bring your pet. I hated seeing some of our, I love seeing four-legged friends, maybe not on Halloween when there's 150,000 people, I always feel bad for them. So any additional types of signage we could do to say, hey, leave your pet, your parakeet, snake, I saw that on the Boulevard, I didn't go buy it at home, but that type of signage would be helpful. But I think ultimately, you have our sincere thanks, and looking forward to a lot of Trump and Biden masks this coming year. Does my colleagues want to make a motion? The direction is to essentially give you permission to do exactly what you did this year, again, last year, this year. Great. Second, and it sounds good.
Thank you.
And it's on a Thursday.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shine?
Thank you.
Wonderful. Moving right along. Item 5C was moved to consent. Thank you very much, amazing staff. Item 5D was moved to consent. So now we will move to item 6A, appointments. I'm happy we have three public commenters, so why don't we go to those right first? Do we have any in Zoom?
No, we do not. And we actually have four now.
Wonderful. We will move right along to in-person public comment. First person, Nick Royball, to be followed by Alan Strasberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it very short. Councilmember Meister, I stand in strong support of your pick for the Planning Commission. Lynn is a champion in this community. I have witnessed firsthand her commitment, her care, her steadfastness, and I will also add this, there is not anyone in this room who hasn't, at one point in their life, had to learn from something they said. That's part of being human. That's part of growing. And I have witnessed that from Lynn, and I champion her, and I applaud you, Councilmember Meister, appointing her to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Strasberg, to be followed by Michael Lewis, who I think is still here.
Alan Strasberg, West Hollywood. Lynn Hoopengartner has proven herself over and over to be a woman of incredible intellect and unmatched tenacity. She has also shown herself to be a human being of rare class and elegant grace. Lynn Hoopengartner is a pillar of this city who has shown more grit and determination than just about anyone I know, and I've known the grit and determination of naval aviators and more. It is reprehensible that her words were interpreted to mark Lynn as a racist. The historical fact reflects that Lynn Hoopengartner has made, pardon me, the historical fact reflects that Lynn Hoopengartner has made multiple decisions in favor of groups now labeling her as racist. Let's stop being intellectually lazy and engaging in cancel culture, which is never justified and is particularly egregious in a city where it is common to attempt to shut down debate by labeling someone with any ism in a defamatory way. Lynn's reappointment to serve this city as a planning commissioner is long overdue, and I applaud Lynn for stepping up and commend Lauren Meister for doing the right thing and making the appointment. I know the city will be well-served by Lynn's service on the Planning Commission.
Thank you so much, Alan. Michael Lewis, to be followed by our last speaker, Kathy Blavis.
Good evening, Mayors and members of the City Council. My name is Michael Lewis, and for the last 14 years, I've represented the Iranian-American-Jewish Center at the corner of Fountain and Crescent Heights. It's 1,000 Persian families, Jewish families, who freely practice their religion in this country because they had to flee from their own. It's certainly no secret that the location of the synagogue and the religious celebrations and its members were problematic for the surrounding residential neighbors. We endured considerable criticism from the neighbors while we attempted to address the nuisance complaints from our religious operations and events. As a retired altar boy, I had to learn a lot about the Jewish faith, its sex, its practices, and its celebrations. When you add the Persian culture, I learned those occasions are big, they're boisterous, they're noisy, they last until the wee hours of the morning, not to mention the traffic. We were before the Planning Commission on several occasions during those years with proposals to address the city's concerns. I spent a few years myself on a Planning Commission, and I know how difficult it can be to sift through the passions and the personalities and get to the substance of the planning. More than once, I probably asked an unartful question as I grappled with the technical terminology of design, construction, and planning in the plain language of angry neighbors. But it was never my intent to discriminate against any of those parties, nor do I believe it was Lynn Hoopengartner's intent when she asked her question about the impacts of a Persian wedding. In fact, my reaction was, oh, God, she knows she's been paying attention. When our Persian Jewish project was before the Design Review Board, Lynn was one of the members. We received nothing but the most professional of reviews and suggestions from Lynn. In fact, it was Lynn's focus on the substantive issues and not the personalities that kept our review meaningful and productive. She led the commentary by complimenting our effort and put into, that we had put into the design and the fact that we were able to check off every design box in the city's new planning criteria, including opening up the corners, ample landscaping, extra outdoor space, private space, and parking, something that no developer had achieved to that point. There was nothing, can I finish? There was nothing in the discriminatory tone attributed to her, and we were certainly the source of weekly Persian weddings attended by residents of Beverly Hills. Just ask our neighbors. The contribution that Lynn has made to planning and development in this city is significant. Her steady hand and thoughtful leadership are qualities needed on every planning commission. I believe the value of her reappointment far outweighs the misrepresentation of her intentions in asking about the impacts of a Persian wedding at a new development. After all, she knows she's been paying attention. Thank you.
Can you wrap? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Sorry for rushing you off. Kathy Blavis, our final speaker.
Good evening, Kathy Blavis, City of West Hollywood. I just wanted to start by thanking and praising Kimberly Copeland for her hard work, her diligence, her commitment on the Planning Commission. I also thank Councilmember Meister for reappointing Lynn Hoopengartner. I have to admit, I was outraged by the scathing letter that Jake Stephens of Fairing Capital sent. Is this the same accepting progressive city that I moved to over 30 years ago? Now name-calling and tarnishing one's reputation as meant to be the end and be all? I am so saddened by the prospect of this becoming the norm in our city. In my opinion, Lynn's decisions on Planning Commission were fair and based on research, knowledge, questioning, and facts. I never witnessed any decision based on bias or favoritism. Whether I have agreed or disagreed with Lynn's decisions, I have never doubted her intention or motivation. Community and our city comes first with her. On every aspect of planning a development, from the parking to the design to landscaping decisions, were made with conviction to what she felt was best for the community and the residents. Period. I never questioned her motivations, and I'm more inclined to question the motivation of those who do. As a member of the community, I applaud Lauren Meister for the reappointment of Lynn Hoopengartner, and I thank her profusely. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kathy.
I, if I may, Councilmember Meister, I'm going to go ahead and point Richard Leroy, because I have no comments on that, to the Older Adults Advisory Board. Additionally, if we could give direction after this item to bring back the at-large for the Older Adults Advisory Board, there was one other application. It's time to appoint that application and figure out. So I would encourage my colleagues to either meet with them, or they are it. And I think that's what we're going to do because I agree with what Lee Wachup and others have been saying, we should ensure that that board is full. And I also believe you will need to re-agendize the Social Justice Advisory Board at-large for the next meeting.
Yeah, we actually have a direct appointment to the Social Justice Advisory Board, which Councilmember Shine has indicated she'll make at the next meeting, and we have an at-large position. So I sent the packet to council last week for review, but I can resend it tomorrow.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. And now I'll move over to Councilmember Meister to make her appointment to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I'd like to address the comment letter we received from Fairing, the Fairing representative Jake Stephens, on my nominee for the appointment. The comments are outrageous and inflammatory, and the quotes are taken out of context. The assumption of racism is unfounded. To Mr. Stephens, an unintentionally insensitive comment does not make someone a racist, and Lynn has paid a price and has learned from this experience. Isn't that what we all wanted to happen? As in the past, Lynn's commitment to fairness and having the best development of our city will never waver. When projects are good, they get her enthusiastic approval. When they can be improved, she'll work diligently with her colleagues and staff to ensure the best possible project for the residents of this city. The apparent attempt to set up Fairing as a perennial victim will not work. They seem to have forgotten that Lynn voted to approve Robertson Lane, voted to approve the French market, voted to approve the Iranian-American-Jewish Center residential project that Mr. Lewis spoke of. If there are any victims here, it is the residents of this city waiting for Robertson Lane to be built, waiting for the factory to rise from the dead, and waiting for the French market to be anything other than a magnet for transients, homeless, or drug addicts. As a West Hollywood resident and council member, I have been blessed to know many smart, detail-oriented, hard-working people, but it is rare, it is a rare person who can fill the role of Planning Commissioner in a way that meets my expectations. I have been lucky enough to have appointed three outstanding women in my tenure as council member, Sheila Lightfoot, Lynn Hoopengartner, and Kimberly Copeland, and I'm calling these women out, especially because it's National Women's History Month. And I'm thrilled to announce the reappointment of Lynn Hoopengartner to Planning Commission, a person who does her homework, knows how to read plans and analyze data, asks the important questions that need to be asked, is fair and open-minded, considers all of the stakeholders, respects the city's core values, and is committed to giving her best efforts for the residents of this city. Lynn Hoopengartner, welcome back. You are an asset to this city as well as the commission, and although sometimes it seems like a thankless task, I speak for many when I say we appreciate your service. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Welcome back, Commissioner Hoopengartner. We will now move on to excluded consent, which there are none, and we'll move into our final public comment period. And we have two public comments. We have Nick Royball and Alan Strasberg.
Again, I will keep it real brief, Mayor. I just wanted to thank your entire team, City Manager Wilson, for the event on Saturday, our open house for WeHo40. From you, Christine, Jackie, your staff, the rec staff, everyone at King's Road, it went beyond professionalism, and I haven't found the right language for it, but it was a... a West Hollywood professionalism, it was a West Hollywood community, and I applaud you. Thank you. I also want to applaud Mayor Erickson, Vice Mayor Byers, Councilmember Meister. Thank you each for showing up and being there for community. It is important when we show up as council members. I also want to thank the firms that were involved, especially Designing in Color, and I'm just speaking for myself, to Christopher and Christopher's entire team, to Anna, who couldn't make it. They really care. And the community that showed up, the teams that showed up, it really was a beautiful event, and I am very grateful to be in this city, to be a resident of this city. I have been in this city for over 20 years, oftentimes not rendered visible, but in this season of visibility, events like this and the future of our city matter, and I am just very grateful. So thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Nick, Alan Strasberg, who is our final's public commenter.
Still Alan Strasberg, still West Hollywood. And since the city manager failed to acknowledge this happened, I think we need to have an honest and open dialogue about the recent brouhaha about whistleblowers, plural, in City Hall, and in particular, the city's truly insulting response that needs to be called out for the messaging it contains. Among other things, quote, "The content and tone of the post on WeHo online has sparked a wave of comments that reflect negatively on the city. The posts themselves contain a myriad of speculative information and a range of accusations about workplace culture and employees," unquote. Or maybe reality reflects negatively on the city. Next quote, "This will be initiated by the city attorney's office, the investigation, which will engage an independent third-party investigator to conduct the process," end quote. As apologist-in-chief, there is little reason the outcome of such an independent third-party will be anything other than a fait accompli. The city's intention, quote, "The city's intention is always to encourage open dialogue, but creating a public-facing discourse can have detrimental impacts on many employees within the organization. Open dialogue, my tush." This letter was meant to shame the whistleblower for rightly airing the city's dirty laundry in public. Goes on to talk about things that are not tolerated, quote, "or efforts to damage the important work and reputation of the city," unquote. In reality, ethics, accountability, and integrity are severely challenged in West Hollywood, and those are the most damaging to the important work in sound municipal governance. And John, liquefaction is not a joking matter. Do better.
Thank you so much, Alan. Enjoy your walk home. We are now concluded with public comment, and we're going to move on to council member comments and meeting attendance reports. Councilmember Meister, would you like to start?
Sure, and I'm warning you in advance, I have a lot to say tonight.
That's okay.
I figured it's a short meeting.
It's only seven away.
Get it while you can. All right. So first, I'll start with consent calendar. I did want to just mention on 2G, which is the WeHo Target Vision Zero Action Plan, that I think we do need to consider e-mobility devices and delivery robots as we look at street safety. A resident wrote me that an experience he had while driving, he heard sirens behind him, he pulled over, the lights turned red for him, and suddenly two delivery robots were entering the crosswalk, and just as two huge fire trucks approached from behind, and the fire trucks had to come to a screeching halt as the robots were in the middle of the crosswalk, and that's because the delivery robots did not identify sirens and unfortunately unnecessarily stopped fire trucks. So we want to make sure that, you know, our pedestrians are safe, but also our first responders. On item 2H, the 2023 cosponsored and council-initiated events, I did want to mention that, you know, I was very disappointed by the attendance of pops and parts, and it had nothing to do with the program, because the program, the level of discussion in this program was phenomenal. And I will say that it's a shame that no one from our development community attended. And so I do believe that that program was videotaped and that anyone can access that videotape, and I would really encourage our development community to do that, because it was such an interesting program having to do with public spaces in private development and making and increasing green space. So I did want to mention that. And then in terms of attendance, since our last meeting, I attended the 75th anniversary of the Design District, the city training on the California Public Records Act, social media and media policy, the first WeHo40 Strategic Plan Community Workshop, the kickoff, and International Women's Day in Plummer Park also kicking it off. I also attended Los Angeles County Economic Development Corp's Economic Forecast Event, which included a breakout group on innovative housing. And what I got out of the breakout group is that we need to seriously look at our zoning codes and our building codes in order to consider repurposing existing office space for housing. More importantly, we should be looking at design standards for new office space development, and we should be looking at it now, so that if the need for office space continues to decline, it can be more easily converted to housing by being set up for that kind of situation. Not only would incentivizing the conversion of office space help us in meeting our arena numbers, it could also shift increased density back to commercial streets and make it more attractive and cost-effective than the demolition of our existing rent-stabilized buildings. Regarding the economic forecast report, it was not rosy. I was sitting at a table with several people I did not know, and when they finished this report, literally, we looked at each other and said doom and gloom. So they noted that the continuing impact of the Hollywood strike, struggling commercial real estate, the unemployment rate trending higher since 2022, regional population decline, housing affordability, and the cost of doing business in LA, particularly the cost of energy. I know that we were all very impressed with the city's $30 million surplus, but in light of this information, I'd like to share some numbers I found enlightening regarding our revenue. First, I asked staff to provide the number of business license tax certificates that were issued for the last 10 years. In 2013, that number was 4,200. In 2018, that number was 4,077, and in 2023, that number was 3,941. So a decline of 6% since 2013. Second, I asked about hotel occupancy and average daily rates. In 2013, occupancy was at 81.4%, and the average daily rate was $243.65. In 2018, occupancy was at 80.4%, and ADR, which is average daily rates, was at $295 approximately. In 2023, occupancy was at 70.7%, and ADR was $382. Occupancy has declined around 10%, and the average daily rate increased 21% from 2013 to 2018, and 30% from 2018 to 2023. Third, I asked about home sales and prices for single-family homes and condos. In 2019, the median price was 1.3 million, and sales were 923 total homes or units. In 2023, they only had five years' data, in 2023, the median price was 1.6 million, and sales was down to 790. We know that property taxes have increased over this period of time, so higher property values means higher property taxes. So our TOT revenue has increased, but less people can afford to stay here in our hotels. I imagine that impacts our restaurants, our bars, and other venues, businesses that are ancillary to our hotels. In fact, the last budget update showed that revenues from sales tax were stagnant, even though the city's sales tax has increased over the last few years. So what all this tells me is that visiting or living in West Hollywood has become more expensive and more exclusive, and we cannot assume that just because we have a surplus that the city's economy is booming. Yes, as a city, the city as a government entity is benefiting from higher prices and higher taxes, but it doesn't mean that our residents and our businesses are thriving. So when we get these reports, we need more context. Otherwise, we are making decisions in a vacuum. Next time, I would like an economic analysis of what's actually going on. I want context, whether it's rosy or not rosy. And also, if we're not already doing this, I think we should be tracking commercial vacancies very specifically. I would like to see real numbers so that we can look at it semi-annually and from year to year. Thank you very much for indulging me. One announcement? Vote, vote, vote tomorrow.
Vote, 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 yes. Thank you. Councilmember Hellman, do you have anything?
Thank you. I attended various meetings in the community. I also want to remind everyone to vote tomorrow if they haven't already done so. I wanted to remind people that the marathon is coming through West Hollywood on Sunday, March 17th, so I hope people remember that morning. There will be notices out, but I also want to encourage people to come out and cheer the runners, and I want to wish good luck to all of our residents who are participating in the event. I want to thank Councilmember Meister for her comments. I think this is something that we need to have a discussion about. There are some, speaking of context, housing sales are likely down right now because the interest rates are quite high. I know I have looked several times, and it just doesn't make sense for me to buy something or to move, given the high interest rates. So I think that's something that we need to think about. And also, the hotel occupancy may be down because we are still coming out of the pandemic. So I think that's something that needs to be looked at as part of the context, but I appreciate you raising those issues and those concerns. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schein?
Thank you. Well, wishing everyone a Women's History Month for March, and again, everybody, please vote, vote, vote. Voter turnout has been historically low, lower than it has in decades so far, so please get out and vote. Since our last meeting, I have attended our Winter Sounds event at the Sun Rose at Pendry twice. I highly recommend this for residents and community members for next year. It was wonderful, and staff did an incredible job. I'm really proud of the work of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission for this wonderful event, and that is all for me tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byers?
Thank you. I have some attendance to note. First, I attended the Clean Power Alliance Legislative Committee meeting, as well as the Energy Planning Committee meeting, the Los Angeles Affordable Housing, or Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency Board meeting, as well as the CEO Search Focus Group, and the National League of Cities Transportation and Infrastructure Services Committee. I also had a chance to visit an expungement clinic hosted by our county supervisor Horvath's office. It was a really remarkable event where so many resources were provided, so community members with records could get those, could begin the process of getting those records cleared, and I'd love to have conversations with our staff about potentially collaborating with her office to bring one of those into our community at some point. We know they're really valuable resources to have, and if we can be home to one, that would be great. Thank you to Nick Roybal for detailing the Strategic Plan Open House this last weekend. It was a treat, and shout out to all contributors who braved those very big rainstorms that day to make that happen. Thanks to everyone who made the art walk in the 75th anniversary of the Design District, such a fun event last Friday and last week. I also want to thank the members of the Bicycle Coalition for the infrastructure tour I was able to partake this last weekend, also on a rainy day. Nothing like being on Fountain Avenue on a bike in the rain, but it's a really eye-opening experience to understand what a lot of people who take those commutes regularly experience, so thank you for that. I wanted to also say happy Women's History Month. We have so much here to celebrate. Thank you to the Women's Advisory Board for making those events happen. I just wanted to make a flag, because as folks know, I'm from Arizona, and I was horrified to see what they are doing to celebrate Women's History Month, so to speak, with this Arizona Women's Bill of Rights. It's an effort moving quickly through the legislature to encode into state law that gender is strictly binary, and it would brand people with their given gender at birth. Obviously, this is not a policy that we would be supportive of here in the city of West Hollywood, and I will be making calls into all the legislators in that state who are hearing that bill come Wednesday. Just wanted to flag this, because this is what we're facing across the country and the work we have to do in solidarity here in the city of West Hollywood. And then lastly, I just wanted to recognize, this time four years ago, our world's changed in a really big way, so I wanted to uplift today as COVID-19 Victims and Survivors Day. West Hollywood has signed on to join other communities in recognizing this day in the first Monday in March. We take this time to remember the resilience shown during these challenging times, pay tribute to healthcare heroes and frontline essential workers, and many individuals who navigated the uncertainties of this global health crisis. Today and throughout this month, I hope you'll give yourself time to reflect, honor the memories of those lives lost to the virus, and express solidarity with all those affected. As we commemorate this day, let us foster a sense of compassion and unity, and acknowledge the shared strength in all of us that emerges from the face of adversity. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Byers? Since our last meeting, I attended the Clean Power Alliance Day in Sacramento, the Contract Cities Board of Directors meeting, the Lesbian Speaker Series event, the Winter Sounds event. I echo what my colleague said. I also attended Sicklevia on Melrose. I welcomed the 70th anniversary class, various individuals from specific years, to St. Victor's, at St. Victor School. I attended the Yimby Town Conference in Austin, where we did talk about ADUs. Nick, we'll talk more about that later. 75th anniversary of the WeHo Design District, the Contract Cities Retail Theft and Fentanyl Subcommittee meeting. I swore in the New DAB member, Councilmember Hellman's New DAB member, Joe Green. I attended the Santa Monica State of the City event. I also then that night attended the Boarding Commission's Social Media and Public Records Training. Thank you to our staff who put on that event. I did a ribbon cutting at Kinergy. I attended the WeHo 40th Strategic Plan Community Workshop, the NCJW LA Guaranteed Income Training, International Women's Day event, as well as the brunch at Pleasure Med that was put on by Wendy Goldman, and I want to thank her for putting on this event on sexual healing and sexual health. A few comments, a couple of items. If we could get that report back regarding the Santa Monica, I'm sorry, Santa Monica-Las Anega Holloway intersection, I'm still waiting on that. I think we're all still waiting on that, and as someone who drove through it, I saw many people almost get hit by cars because people don't wait, which was very scary, and so I'd really like to see what better efforts we could do to impact that intersection. Additionally, while I was waiting to come here at Santa Monica Boulevard in San Vicente, I saw six cars turn left on a red. So however that happens, including a bus, so that was fun to watch, but that would be a fun intersection to look at how we could better increase traffic mitigation measures as you see pedestrians starting to walk, and then there are six cars still taking their left- or right-hand turns. And additionally, this coming Wednesday is the Public Safety Appreciation event. That was my item. Thank you to my colleagues for cosponsoring that, I believe, a year ago at this point. I sadly now am not able to attend because I have to fly to DC to be at the State of the Union event for my day job, because we all have day jobs, so I will be there, and I will not be able to be there, but I really want to thank all of our first responders, our sheriffs, our fire, our block-by-block, and I know my colleagues will do a great job there and have a lot of fun, and I'm really, really sad to miss it. Seeing no other comments, we will adjourn tonight's meeting at 7:23. Yeah, I know. And our next regular meeting is on Monday, March 18th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, right here in the public meeting room. Thank you very much, everyone. Stay safe and healthy, and vote.